District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:39 PM Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Slusner?
Here.
Chair Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a request that our presenters turn off their cameras until there's time to present and that will populate our screen with School Board members. Thank you. Superintendent Munoz, the first item is approval of the agenda. Superintendent Munoz?
There are no changes.
Move approval, Marvin.
Second, Slusner.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say, uh-oh. Please listen to Ms. Edgar call the roll.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Slusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Free announcements and communications. 3.01, recognitions. Superintendent Munoz?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to attempt to share my screen. No?
No.
All right, let me try it again. All right. All right. Wendy, is it possible for you to pull up the PowerPoint on your computer? I, for some reason, it's saying I need permission, security permission. I don't know if it has something to do with my new computer I just got.
I don't know how to share on my computer, but I can pull it up.
Okay. Well, why don't you, Heather, can you possibly?
Yeah, I will work on that. Give me one second to locate it.
Okay. All right.
In the meantime, can we move on to the next item?
Yep, we can jump down to the second one. I do have a statement I would like to read. Governor Walz has declared June 2020 as Refugee Recognition Month and Rochester Public Schools offices services to support refugees attending Rochester Public Schools. For example, English learner program, bilingual paraprofessionals, programming at Hawthorne Education Center such as adult basic education, bridges to careers, citizenship, family literacy, language classes for English learners, and much more. Rochester Public Schools is proud of our students' diversity and the programming we offer to help individuals from all backgrounds. And I've also put the governor's proclamation in Board Docs for Board members if they want to take a look at that as well.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Nessler may be able to share the first item.
Yep, can you see it?
Yep. All right, if you can go to the second slide, Heather. This is, I just wanted, we felt it was important to recognize some of our students, a couple of weeks ago organized a Black Lives Matter protest a couple Saturdays ago, and I know some of the Board members also attend. But on the screen there, you can see the students from our district who organized that. The first one is Yessi Guxa, Rachel Zhang, Jada Croson, Mutas Farah, Muni Udali, Abby Anderson Tryon, Kesharan Metta, Kinga Moses, Daryl Washington, and Sarah Taha. So these were the individuals that, from our district, that, from the various high schools, that led that march. And the next few slides that I'll have Heather go through, just show some of the pictures from that protest, and we want to thank Med City Beat for providing these photos for us. You know, I do want to make a couple other comments. I know some of the Board members are there, and I'm really proud of our students for organizing that and lead that. There were, I never did hear their official count, but there were a lot of people there, not only just student age, but adults as well. And, you know, I think it's really important that our students understand that their voice does matter, and they need to take opportunities like this to express their voice and really get their message across. So I want to thank those individuals that were on that screen for organizing that march on that Saturday.
We're going to go to Director Marvin and then Director Barlow.
Thank you. Actually, most of us who were involved in the Board meeting tonight, including the superintendent, were at Mayo Park on June 6th. And I think what we witnessed demonstrates that these young people, and so many young people in this community, are not just future leaders, they're today's leaders. They see a system that's broken, and they don't just get angry, they get a plan, they build a coalition, and they take action to educate, to inspire, and to challenge all of us to do better. So, young people, if you're listening, and I don't know how many of you listen to these things on Tuesday nights, but if you're listening, if you're not, we'll send this out, two messages for you. First one, think about becoming a teacher. Your intelligence, your voice, your passion would be great gifts to children who will be entering our schools in the future. And second, because it may be a while before you can actually get your own classroom, we ask you to meet with school district board members and administrators so we can problem solve together how best to move forward, even if you're critical, and maybe especially if you're critical about what we're doing. We need your perspective so that the decisions we make are really informed and equitable. We will be reaching out to you soon to arrange a meeting, and we hope you'll say yes. Thank you, it was an amazing day, and you are one of the best groups of people that this district has ever witnessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Director Barlow?
Yes, and I'm thankful that the district is acknowledging the participation of our students, especially those who perhaps have felt emboldened, empowered, have come to a, an awareness of the voice they have, unlike perhaps many other students who have yet to do that. But I think it's also important for us to acknowledge that it's more than just a, an appreciation of their efforts and how they went about doing that. I believe there's an expectation that is in existence, and not only in part of the students, but we've heard in terms of public comments as well, that we should actively work toward meaningful change. That is reflective in our curriculum, our staffing, classroom environment, to include our grading practices as well, and policies. So that we go beyond just that historical term lip service and pat on the back and kudos, but we actually are able to embrace and affirm the need for change. And as Director Marvin has said, I appreciate their diligence, and I'm sure we will continue to hear from them. I encourage that, and I look forward to further engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Director Nathan, did you have a question on the presentation?
I do. You want me to continue?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I want to echo what Director Marvin said about reaching out to the students and wanting to hear from you directly. I think all the Board members and the superintendent received a copy of the petition that a number of the students that were associated with organizing the march have been circulating since Monday, and I haven't checked lately to see how many signatures, but I think the last time I checked, there was over 600. And it's students, family members, alumni that are all signing the petition. And I think that petition is a great place for us to start our conversation, to have a conversation about mutual education, about what's happening in our district, to address these very important issues, and how we can work together to create the right kind of policies and programs that are going to address their concerns. So I hope that as part of our conversation, we'll specifically address that petition.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Yes, Superintendent?
Yes, I just, I have seen a draft of that petition, but until, I don't know if anybody knows when we're officially going to receive that petition, when it's going to be formally presented to the School Board and the administration?
Doesn't sound like it. We are anxiously awaiting. Board members, I am seeing in the chat that we are having an issue with the YouTube channel. I am going to make a motion that we go into recess for just a few moments to see if that tech not, tech, tech issue can be addressed.
Set that, Marvin.
We are reconvening at 6:39 PM. Thank you for your patience. We had a technical issue. Thanks to the folks who worked furiously on that behind the scenes. Item 3.02, 2020 School Board Committee Assignments Update. Has anyone attended any committees they'd like to share about? Okay, I'm going to move on unless, no, I'm not seeing anybody. It's pretty quiet, so my assumption is that we haven't attended any meetings. Item four, consent agenda. Is there any items anyone wants pulled out for separate consideration? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Move for approval, Barlow.
Second?
Second, Workman?
Thanks, everybody. I'm going to have Ms. Edgar call the roll call.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Slusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just another technical note, we are recording this meeting and hope to have a recording available within 24 hours. We are running on some sort of backup system, so apologies for any of that. Also apologies for our next group of presenters. 5.01, fine, oops, go ahead.
Yes, I have three retirements I'd like to recognize. The first one is Janet Finsgard. She's a first grade teacher at Bishop Elementary School, retirement effective at the end of the day, August 21st, 2020, and she's been with the district 31 years. Paraprofessional retirements. William Anderson, elementary paraprofessional at Hoover Elementary, retirement effective end of the day, June 5th, 2020, been with the district four years. And Catherine Kurska, elementary paraprofessional and student attrition services paraprofessional at Churchill Elementary School, retirement effective end of the day, June 15th, 2020, has been with the district 28 years. We want to thank those three individuals for their service to our district.
Thank you, Superintendent. 5.01, fine arts articulation. This is an information item, Superintendent, or Director?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and introduce all our guests that we have for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you for this opportunity to have us share kind of the wrap-up of our fine arts articulation that actually was, has been going on for a couple of years. And it was, this process was led by CNI team members Kate Palmquist, Heather Willman, Monica Bowler, and Brandon McCraffick, and they are going to be your main presenters, and they have also brought in some teachers who are involved in the process. And it's always exciting to hear from teachers, so I'm going to let Heather and Kate and Monica and Brandon take this away.
Okay, good evening. I'm Kate Palmquist, and I work in elementary curriculum and instruction, and I am going to share for the first time on Microsoft Teams, so please let me know. Can you see this?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so Brenda did a nice job of kicking us off and to let you know why we're here today. I mean, we're going to do some quick introductions. Again, I already shared my name, Kate Palmquist. I work in elementary curriculum and instruction. Unfortunately, Brandon McCraffick was unable to come tonight, but he is principal and special assignment here at CTEC. And then I'll let the rest of you introduce yourselves, maybe just follow along. We'll start with Amanda, and then we'll kind of go down the list.
Amanda Cowes, Band Director at Century High School.
Tracy Youngberg, music teacher at Bishop in Bamber Valley.
Jen Olson, Mayo High School, art teacher.
Maureen Quinn, art teacher at Mayo High School.
Tiffany Eary, art teacher at Franklin and Montessori at Franklin.
And Heather Willman, secondary curriculum.
And Monica Bowler, curriculum and instruction.
Okay, did I miss anyone else? Okay, so some of us are all going to jump in and take these slides as we go, so Tracy, go ahead.
So we met several times over the course of the last two years, and we talked about what our best practices currently are, and what our resources are, and what, what future best practices would be, and where we hope we could bring the music program to in the future.
Sorry if you can't see my slide, but on this slide, it just shares who was all involved in this process. So Brenda spoke at the beginning about a group of teachers that came together. So when it came to music in 2018, we brought a group together. The names that you'll see on the screen right now are teachers in music that came together in elementary, middle, and high school, as well as we had some building administrators and implementation associates who are wonderful teachers that take four years to work in CNI with curriculum writing. So these are the groups of teachers that came together when it came time to discuss music. So the 2018-2020 process, what that looks like for fine arts articulation and any articulation cycle that we go through, is when MDE comes out with a new set of standards for a particular subject area, we convene a team, like the names that you saw on the screen before, and we start by, one of our first meetings is researching what our current reality is. So in order to make changes, to make our processes better, we need to have a current understanding of what it is that music looks like in our elementary, middle, and high school. So we spent some time going into classrooms and doing observations, we did student surveys, we talked to teachers in music about what is the music program like for students who go through K-12 music classrooms in Rochester Public Schools. After we were able to determine our current reality, then we broke into teams by elementary and middle and high school, and we researched what does best practice say that we should be doing in our music classrooms. And then after that, our teams got together and did some action planning. We looked at our current reality, our best practice, and then said, what are the next steps that we need to do to improve music for all of our students here in Rochester? So we took time to do that, and then implementation year started here in 2019, and will move into next year, into 2020-21. So in a minute here, we're going to share a little bit about what are some changes that we made. Amanda, do you want to take this slide?
Sure.
I can jump in at any time.
Perfect. Through the process that Kate just outlined, these were some of the areas that we identified as strengths of the music department, starting with the strong relationships and the collaboration that already exists among our music teachers, especially within each grade level through our elementary, teachers working together, middle school, high school, and especially within the performance areas. Also, we have several music teachers who have put in work to develop their units around the standards, especially as we look through the revised standards that we hope are implemented here in 2021. And also voices of our students wanting more opportunities to engage in music in our district. We currently have our elementary music classes, and then in sixth grade, the single point entry into the three performing ensembles of band, orchestra, and choir. So we do have several students and students within those groups that are looking for more performance and music opportunities, or non-performance opportunities, so ways that we can engage more of our student population in music. So areas we identified for growth, protecting our PLC time as music teachers. Again, many of us are singleton music teachers in our building or with traveling teachers not in the building during the designated PLC time, so that is something that we definitely could strengthen and grow. We also have different processes throughout the buildings as far as how the music programs are funded, whether it's the purchase of sheet music within the program, or how the capital outlay process works from year to year and is communicated to staff. Our elementary teachers have identified quite easily that our current textbook and curriculum has been outdated for quite some time, the request for more curriculum writing time, and then, again, offering more courses at the high school level to match the expanded interest and provide more options for our students.
So, once we identified our strength and our growth areas, like I stated earlier, we got into work group teams and tried to identify two to three top core areas that we knew that we needed to change. And so on this slide, you'll see some of the outcomes that we've achieved over the last two years of curriculum writing work. So Tracy, are you on the call to talk about elementary?
Yes, Kate, I'm still here. So what we have done with our curriculum writing time, we have made sure that we are current with the present music standards. We're waiting to make some slight adjustments once the standards have been officially and finally completed for the adoption of our state. We've also made sure that we've included benchmarks in the standards, and we've looked at inclusivity, which is one of the things that we were really looking at quite closely with the possibility of getting new resources for our curriculum, new materials. We really want to make sure that our students are seeing themselves in the curriculum. So that was one of the lenses we used to pick and choose and finally rest upon the pearson realize.
And then in middle school, one of the biggest outcomes that they achieved based on their requests was opportunity to have summer curriculum writing time. So there's two weeks in June where our teachers are able to come together and apply for summer curriculum writing time to update their standards, similar to what Tracy spoke about. And so they took now two summers to come together as middle school music teachers and to rewrite some curriculum based on those new standards.
And at the high school, this past fall, Erin Cole from Mayo High School and myself took a look at course offerings throughout the state in districts similar size beyond band, orchestra, and choir, and put together a survey for our high school students that was offered at all three high schools, just to gauge student interest. And this last fall, we were able to add a ukulele course to the course registration guide. Students did register, and we will be offering one to two sections of ukulele class at all three high schools this fall. Summer curriculum writing for that course took place, I believe, yesterday and today.
And then one other large outcome that we achieved based on feedback from our music teachers was the need for a special area lead. And I believe Heather might speak to this too when it comes time to art, but our teachers identified that there really needs to be someone in the elementary and secondary level that can help coordinate with our music and our art teachers, and then also meet with Heather and I regularly to find out, you know, what are the needs within these departments? How can we better support them through curriculum and instruction? So we were able to offer a stipended position last year, and we'll do that moving forward to pay for a special area lead in music and in art for both elementary and secondary. All right, art.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Quinn, and the members that were part of the facilitation for articulation with visual arts with elementary, we had Mary Durgen, Tiffany Eary, who is on this call tonight, and Mary Quick. In middle school, we had Callie Young and Claudia Dreyer, who has moved from middle school teaching to high school. In high school, Jen Olson, who is on this call as well, myself, Tanya Oy, Lisa Becker, Mike Anderson, and Bailey Quam. Our administrators as part of this sessions were Terry Lynn Ander and Monica Bowler, and Implementation Associate Julie Ace. As we started the process, step one was looking at this question, what is our present level of performance? And to answer this, we gathered data from parent and student surveys in Rochester Public Schools. The Articulation Committee visited classrooms across Rochester Public Schools from elementary, middle school, and high school, and we did a survey of existing art programs in the region and in the state, looking at schools that were of a comparable size to Rochester.
Hi, this is Tiffany Eary. And so the next part of our process, from the, from what we found in step one, we identified our strength and growth areas for our arts program. So, a lot of strength areas, which is good. Our families and students definitely want more arts experiences. There's a strong collaboration among our team. Generally, we meet K-12 in the beginning of the year and maybe once throughout the year, but we have strong collaboration K through five, and then the middle school teams meet, and the high school teams meet. Through the observation process, there was a lot of choice seen in the classrooms, offering students choice, as well as active engagement. And the media arts program has grown at the high school level as we, as our teachers work on learning more, doing professional development, and building their programs. Some growth areas, and there's actually another page of this for strengths, but some growth areas were that we would like to see more time for art at the elementary and middle school, based on the feedback from our families and students. Same with music, we would like some protected time for our art PLC. We have found that the supply and art funds that, at each site, are very different, which creates some inequity for our students. Another growth area is developing some strong practices around the self-evaluation and critiquing for our students, and continuing to focus on those technology needs to support our media arts programs. And then another strength is that our visual arts program has a strong history of being very standards-based, but a growth area would be, continue to support to implement our new standards that are coming in, including the media arts standards.
All right, so step three of our process-
All right. So step three of our process, this is Heather Willman, we created a prioritized list of requests to enhance the fine arts programming. So once we really looked at stakeholder input, we thought about, well, what are those priorities that we want to work on? Can you move to the next slide?
Sorry, I might be being slow here. So I apologize. I'm clicking. It's just taking a little while.
No, you're good. So the first thing we looked at was curriculum and collaboration support. And so one thing that we implemented was a full day code seven in 2019, 2020 for some standards development and grading for learning implementation. We have some, we have two full days coming up for summer curriculum writing, K for K through 12 for the art department, and then one day per quarter in 2020, 21 to be able to come together and collaborate.
Hi, this is Monica Bowler. We've also made arrangements for a common PLC structure. They were talking about that protected time. We know what gets scheduled gets done. And so we've proposed the times that you see below. And we'll go to the next slide. And the use, the rationale behind that and how that time will be used, we'll be discussing and modeling effective instructional practices for visual arts, studying new standards, which we anticipate implementing by fall of 2021, aligning the curriculum with the new standards, developing performance rubrics, examining student work across sites, and using evidence-based assessment practices.
Hi, this is Jennifer Olson. I'm going to talk about media arts, and I thought I would take just a quick minute to explain the difference between visual arts and media arts. In the state of Minnesota, there are five areas of arts, dance, theater, music, visual arts, and media arts. And so there are a separate set of standards that we can meet our arts credits with. And media arts is a growing art form across the, across Minnesota and across the whole country. And I guess the best way to describe it is that it's, media arts includes cinematic arts or the art of movement, sound, and time. And so it's, it's more of a digital and video production with an artistic lens. So that's kind of a quick definition of visual, our media arts versus the traditional visual arts that we have for Rochester Public Schools. So in, with that change and meeting the standards in the media arts, we had to recommend the course description be changed. And so you can see in here, the old, the old description was basically called a graphic design class or a computer art class. And it has grown so much beyond that so that we had to rename it. So it's now called Graphic Digital Arts 1. And we have a lot of amazing software and cameras and green screens, and the digital artists are creating top-quality work because of this. And we've also added Digital Arts 2, which is a more in-depth process in really getting into that. We also opened it up to ninth graders coming in. Traditionally, it had been a 10th, 11th, and 12th grade class only. And we have a lot of people in the middle schools who are already doing animation with iPads. And kids are coming to high school wanting to do that and wanting to, and do computer arts. You'd be amazed at how many kids pull out an iPad and draw that in the regular art class. So media arts is in high demand. Next slide. So we had some recommendations to go along with the growing media arts program, along with changing the class descriptions. We really wanted to purchase color printers that are large format for our high schools. And I'm not sure where we are in the process of that was approved or not, but that's one of our requests is in order to create large digital imagery, and we need a large digital printer to showcase that and present it. We need more support and resources for elementary art teachers to include media arts. The standards go all the way through K-12. And so being able to start at an earlier age would be great. And then some professional development for our high school teachers especially, but also all of our teachers who are teaching media arts to get access to the best professional development in the state. So we were asking for that additional support also. Next slide. Back to visual arts, having an adequate, adequate supply budget is cornerstone to our, our programs. Years ago, our, our art budget was a separate program at the elementary and middle school levels. And several years ago, that was kind of lumped into a general fund. And often, it wasn't adequate, or it wasn't equitable across buildings and even within buildings of how much money was spent on art supplies. And so we made the request to pull that budget back out and be a separate budget that our teachers would be allowed to purchase the art supplies and the consumables that they need from year to year. And then we were also requesting more transparency at high schools. Just being able to have a number at the beginning of the year so that we can be supportive in purchasing equipment for our students at the high school level. So I think both of those were worked on. Items that were requested but not funded, additional art time for students at elementary and middle schools was something that we really wanted to start our conversation with, especially with the school board and administration, that in elementary and middle levels, especially the elementary school level, the National Art Educators Association suggests one art teacher for every 300 to 400 students. And currently, our teachers are about 100 to 900 students. So we're really falling behind the national goals of where our, our students need more art. And we also requested a budget for our district art show. We were hoping for $500 for all the elementary, middle, and high school levels so that we could present student work in a, in an arts, in a studio-style art show. Last year's event with elementary students was huge, and it was in the, in Edison Building, and thousands of people came to see it. And so we were just asking for a little bit of money to help cover those costs so that we weren't having to go to PTA. And since our standards are based in create, perform, respond, and connect, that perform or present is a huge part of what we teach our students. So having that access would be another thing to reconsider. That's all. Next slide.
I think that might be our last slide.
Oh, great.
So Heather, anything else that you have to add before I open it up to any questions?
I would just say that we, we had an amazing group of teachers, both with music and with visual arts, that really dug into student voice, what did our families tell us? And they were really willing to look at our program and say, what can we do to, to make a better program for our students? And it was just a pleasure to work alongside them. And we know that we've still got areas and recommendations that we weren't able to fulfill at this time, but it was a great start to that conversation, and we're going to continue to work together on those pieces.
Absolutely. Great.
Superintendent, did you?
Yeah, go ahead, superintendent.
Yeah, just a couple comments. First, I wasn't aware of the $500 request for District Art Show. I'm okay in that. You're getting it. It's, it's now funded, okay? Now, the other request for more art staff, that's a much longer conversation and probably can't make that kind of promise, especially as we look in the next couple of years of some major budget reductions across the district. But just wanted to chime in and say, you can count on that $500 for your district art show.
Awesome. That's great news.
Look at that. Let's see. Director Nathan, do you have a question?
I do. Sorry if I missed it because I was going a little glitchy, but the art staff identified items requested but not funded. Did the music staff have any of those? Since Mike is generous tonight?
Well, equity money would be great if we could have culture experts to come in and help us beef up some of our resources to have our curriculum better represent our students. That would be a great use of that equity money. We are currently in conversation with some Native American elders because, well, I participate in the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee as a teacher rep. And so we have been in conversation with those folks and with some other people that on that group are helping our CNI group dig into the curriculum aspect a little bit more deeply. But that would be one, one request that could go off our way. We didn't have that request put in. We feel like if we get resources for curriculum, that's pretty huge.
I guess I can chime in on that one, Deborah. Send me a proposal, and I'll take a look at it. I do also want to make a comment. One of the, I think the feedbacks you got on your survey was the arts budget was different at different buildings. And I, we did have the conversation at the cabinet level and next year's budget. There's a specific line item for the arts for each building. I think it used to be that several years ago, and then I'm not sure when, prior to I got here, I think it got all rolled into the supply budget. But after we heard that concern, we had a separate line item that buildings will have specifically for the arts.
Thank you, Superintendent. Apologies to Director Workman. I know she was the first one to ask if she could ask a question, and I lost track of her. So go ahead, Julie.
Oh, that's no problem. I'd like to just make, I have a question and I have an observation. I'll start with the observation. And a couple different times, you mentioned that parents wanted both art, more art and music experiences for their students. And I remember when we did the thought exchange for the graduate profile that we heard the same thing from parents at that time. So I hope at some point that this can be pursued because everybody knows how important arts are to our, our humanity and the link between arts participation and achievement. So my question is, you talked about the middle school summer curriculum writing for music. Is there any curriculum, curriculum writing that is vertical instead of just horizontal? In other words, you do the band correct curriculum, grade six through 12, as opposed to isolating those two things so that there can be continuity in the curriculum?
Yes, there's definitely been conversations about it. I would say because our curriculum writing has been more aligned to getting to know the new standards. We haven't gone all the way vertically K-12, but our elementary music teachers have done a wonderful job of doing that alignment K-5, and then our middle school, six, eight, and nine, 12. But I, I'm not sure, Amanda, if you want to add anything about secondary, I can speak to elementary doing that work K-5, but I would say for sure this first couple times was just getting acquainted with what the new standards were.
And Amanda here, I can speak to the band. I know that our middle school band colleagues have kind of working six through eight, and I believe this summer they were working on eight. So in looking future, we would then kind of link on the ninth through 12. But the voices of people wanting to write for the middle school people much more loudly than high school. So at this point, again, I believe the band has now kind of made their way six through eight with the, look at the new standards.
I, I remember when I was, when I was teaching high school orchestra, which is mostly what I did, that that, that link with middle school was really important so that I would meet individually with the middle school orchestra person and, you know, what were my expectations for students coming into ninth grade, and what was realistic to expect. But, you know, that was just an example of what I did individually with the teacher at Kellogg. So I don't know if that kind of cross-pollination is going across in other schools or not, but I found it to be very helpful.
Yes, no, we definitely have those conversations, just not necessarily in the formal curriculum writing at this point.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I can maybe speak just a little bit to the ukulele curriculum writing, because I was able to work with those teachers yesterday. And one of the things that we're most excited about with that, that course is that many of the students have signed up for a music class for the first time. And so we're definitely hitting a group of students that wasn't normally enrolling in music. And so we're excited to see what the possibilities are for that course.
So I will, I don't usually make requests, but on behalf of the board, we'd love to hear some ukulele players maybe come next spring, come to the board meeting and serenade us in. That would be so awesome.
That sounds great. I know they're looking for performance opportunities.
Okay, we'll take it. I had a question about the media arts class. Is that a class that's starting this fall in 2020 or future?
Um, it's already, it's already started. So this, this school year, we were doing it. With COVID and distance learning, we had to scramble because the programs that we are using, you need a pretty strong high-tech computer and sending home a Chromebook with high schoolers. It just wasn't feasible. But yeah, they were, they were piecing things together, and hopefully we can have a better plan for fall.
That's great. Thank you. Board members, other questions?
I had a question.
Go ahead, Mark.
Was there any discussion about incorporating 3D printers?
We didn't really talk too much about 3D printers with the graphic design. They do a lot with the Adobe Suite. We do have 3D printers out at CTEC in some of those courses, but there's a little bit more of the graphic design part of, of this course. So that wasn't really discussed within, within these two, the graphic design one and two. More than anything, I think what we did with these two was kind of streamline the two courses, and then try to build in that cinematography piece as well.
Sure. It's just something to think about because a lot of times people think of 3D printers as industrial, but there really is a cool intersection in between graphic design and the 3D world.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions, board members? Take a few second pause to make sure you can get unmuted or raise a hand or... I think it's great to hear a presentation about classes and students and student choice. We feel a little, I think we felt a little isolated from the work of, you know, the, in the classroom work. So we really appreciate your presentation. Okay, last call. Seeing nothing? Okay. Thank you so much for being here, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for participating.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for your patience, too. Okay, next, we're going to move on to 7.01, Approval of Bids and Related Processes for Student Nutrition Services. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'll turn it over to Amy Ike. He's got the Director of Community Education to introduce Sheri and Angie, and they will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, Chair Seelinger, board members. I'm happy to be with you this evening. With me in the room, but far enough to be social distanced, are Sheri Knudsen, the head of our Student Nutrition Services Department, and Angie Workline, Assistant Coordinator. And then they are also representing a fabulous leadership team that includes Dale Winham, Kayla Timmerman, I'm going to say Travis because my brain is not giving me a last name, and Pierce, and Natasha, and Joyce and Cynthia as well do just phenomenal work. And the reason I bring those names up is just before they present their bids tonight, I just wanted to say a huge word of thanks to that entire department, including their approximately 100 staff members, for all of the work during distance learning to make sure our community had access to daily food through grab-and-go drive-through sites as well as mobile feeding sites that also allowed us to get out on school buses into neighborhoods and provide those meals. And now they have completely shifted over to summer feeding. So no rest for these guys. But I'm going to invite Sheri to join you and tell you about some food bids that you need to act on at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for the kind words. Good evening, board members. Angie and I are here this evening to request Good evening, board members. Angie and I are here this evening to um request approval for three different bid items for the 2021 school year. So first, we are um asking to um consider approval to continue purchasing through Sourcewell. And Sourcewell is a municipal contracting government agency that serves other education and government agencies to competitively bid and awarded contracting purchasing solutions. They have awarded um part of their contract with the multi-unit group, which is a group of independent food service distributors um in Minnesota. We have for the last three years purchased through this entity um with Upper Lakes Foods from Cloquet, Minnesota. And um we're asking for approval that we can continue to purchase through Sourcewell and Upper Lakes um for the 2021 school year um in the estimated spend amount of $2,700,000. Secondly, we're asking for approval to continue to purchase um our milk and milk products from Kemp's. We um went through a bid approval process last year where we can continue on in um a three-year agreement with Kemp's. We have received um approximate pricing for the 21, 2021 school year from Kemp's, which is included in the information in your packet, I believe. And so that we're asking for approval to continue purchasing from um Kemp's. And just a word of note on the Kemp's milk um processing will no longer, it ended um I believe several weeks ago um with the actual production of milk in the um city of Rochester. And they will be moving their facilities to um the Twin Cities area. So approving the contract for Kemp's for next year means that they will be hauling milk down from the Twin Cities rather than getting it locally as we've been luckily able to do for, I think, the last um at least 20 some years. And then thirdly, we're asking for approval for the paper products. And that bid was sent to two vendors and bids were received and opened on June 2nd. And a summary of those products is also included in your packet. So I would um entertain any questions that um you may have of, of us regarding these bids.
Um, I of course will um echo Amy's thank you to SNS. I was out at JM today doing some little reconnaissance and it was so great to see the families come and um our SNS folks handing out lunches. Um, I've been at um uh Oak Terrace this summer as well on the bus putting out the wifi and um just I'm, I'm so thankful for our department and I'm so appreciative of our district that we have really stepped up and uh kept feeding our students and um I just, it, it warms my heart and watching the kids come up and get to know the, the folks who are handing out lunches and know their names and know their families, I think is, is really, is really pretty special. So thank you, um Sheri and all of your department. I don't really have any questions. I just am happy to see your face because you know, I'm really ever the only one here in the building and Wendy's here, Kurt is here, but um so it's nice to see uh some district folks online. Um, looks like Director Marvin has a question.
Thank you. I think actually um Director Nathan was here before me, so I could defer to her. But I have to say, in all the years I've been involved with this district, I don't think we have ever had better leadership in our SNS program. And I thank you so much for your intelligence, your compassion for our kids. It means food is seminal to everything we do. And unless Director Nathan has something else, I would like to move this to action.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Um, I will have Ms. Edgar call the roll to move this to action. Am I getting it right?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow? Mr. Barlow, did we lose you? Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Slusner?
Aye.
Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're getting through it, folks. It is now an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize Student Nutrition Services to purchase food products from Upper Lakes Foods, Cloquet, Minnesota through the multi-unit group Sourcewell contract for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year to be funded from the Student Nutrition Budget. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the pricing from Kemp's LLC of Rochester, Minnesota in the estimated amount of $472,173 for the purchase of milk and milk products for all schools for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year to be funded from the Student Nutrition Services Budget. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent Schools District 535 does hereby accept the bid from Trio Supply Company of Minneapolis, Minnesota in the es- estimated amount of $230,009, sorry, $230,769.30 for the purchase of paper products for all schools for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year to be funded from the Student Nutrition Services Budget.
Move approval. Workman?
Second, Amundson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Slusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Knutson?
Thank you for your approval and for the generous, kind comments on the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Take care. Okay, board members, we have now reached 7.02, Rochester Public Schools Building Update. This is an information item. Superintendent?
Yes, I'd like to turn this over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations. We also have uh Keenan McWaters from Knutson Construction. They will uh provide this information for us tonight.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to update you, provide information on the referendum projects. This is our monthly update. Tonight, Keenan McWaters is with us. He's from Knutson Construction, who is our construction manager agent. And we also have Jason Woodhouse. He's one of the prin- principal architects. He's from CRW. Um, Kevin Holm from LHB, he's not available tonight, so Jason is here to answer any questions that you might have. Keenan's here to provide you with information regarding the schedule of the projects along with uh the budget. And I can give you a quick update on some projects that already started as referendum projects. Uh, we're already started six of the eight secure entry projects at our sites. The two that haven't started the construction yet are at uh Hawthorne and Northrop, but those are going to be starting soon. And we also have the three auditoriums, uh one at each of the high schools that are well underway as well. And all these projects are due to be complete by uh mid-August, hopefully before the start of school. So I'm going to turn it over to Keenan, who has a short presentation regarding the budget and the schedule. And then afterwards, we'll take questions. So I'll turn it over to Keenan.
Thanks, Scott. Um, share my screen here. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everyone again. Um, as Scott mentioned, no design update tonight, so you'll have to bear with me and uh Jason to help me answer any questions you may have. But um, starting on the Northwest Elementary School, which is now called the 2019 New Elementary School, we are in design. We are rapidly approaching the first bid package, which will include the civil core and shell as well as site utilities. So essentially, we're going to be bidding out all of the structural components of the building and the building exterior skin and facade as well as the site work. Um, that is scheduled to go out on June 30th and we're anticipating about 10 different bid packages being included with that or bid scopes. Um, six of these are planned to be traditional hard bid and four of them are planned to be issued using the best value system that I know you're all familiar with. And bids are due on July 21st and we will be seeking board approval at the August 4th board meeting. Um, we have a couple of other updates for you at that meeting as well, so that could get to be a long one. Uh, second bid package is scheduled to be issued on September 15th and we'd be seeking board approval on October 20th. And that would complete the bidding process for the first elementary school. The middle school design continues. Um, this school, we're planning on three separate bid packages. The first one being issued in August would be just for the civil and site utilities. This would allow us to get onto the site while weather is still nice and get moving some dirt around. And then we would follow up with bid package number two, the core and shell in September. And finally, the remainder of the building in November. Um, construction on the middle school is scheduled for 18 months, being completed in June of 2022, allowing a few months of move-in before the start of the school year that fall. Harriet Bishop and Longfellow, these are both in design at slightly different stages. Um, design progressing very nicely and we're anticipating bidding these out in January and February of 2021. These will go out as single bid packages for each school. The secure entry projects, as Scott alluded to, we are started them. I actually believe, Scott, we started Northrop uh yesterday. And um Hawthorne will start in August. We are showing an August 11th completion date for seven of the eight. Um, we are pushing on that and we fully expect that we'll be out of there before August 11th and get your buildings turned back over to you a few weeks early. Uh, again, the high schools and for Dell is scheduled for next summer. The pool projects are continuing to be on hold. We're hoping to pick the design back up on those starting um December of this year. And the auditorium renovation is, construction has started. This one's being managed by district staff, but it sounds like they're off to a good start and budget is in line. Um, so for each building budget, the 2019 New Elementary, we're at 33.8. That is adjusted slightly from my update last month. Um, and it is about $442,000 over the approved referendum amount, but we are still carrying a contingency of $761,000. So we're in a, we are in a good spot on that project. Um we're making adjustments weekly and we'll continue to monitor that one. The, I got a typo on this. On 615, the City Council Northwest Annexation, that's actually for the middle school, so I apologize for that. Um, but good news, that was approved yesterday by City Council. There will be another meeting in Jul- or in July for that. And then um if we receive approval, then it'll go to the state for review. Jason, do you have anything to add on that at this time?
Uh, no, that's correct. It'll go back in July for one more round.
Okay. Then again, the 30th, the bid package one will go out for bid. The middle school project, the budget of $63.05 million is unchanged from the referendum amount. We have done um some budget checks on it based on real preliminary designs and we are right in line with that number, so we're feeling very good about where that school is at. I am still showing two to four weeks behind on the schedule. And one of the reasons that we're splitting this one into three different bid packages is to allow a little more time for design. Um, I don't anticipate there being any issues here. We just want to highlight it so everyone is aware. Um, as I mentioned, the annexation was approved the first round yesterday. So we'll continue moving forward on that. And over the next month, we'll have several staff meetings and the next board meeting on July 14th will actually be presenting schematic design for that school. And at that time, we will have a more firm budget to you to present. The Longfellow and Harriet Bishop schools are both tracking at 33 million, um right on schedule. The land swap for Longfellow was accepted by the Parks Department, which is a huge milestone for design. It gives us a site to really start working around. And the first design meeting, there's a typo on this, is actually scheduled for July 13th, not um June 29th. That meeting was pushed back in hopes that it could be done in person, but I think we're still going to be online. Harriet Bishop will have a public and staff presentation tomorrow night. And then the final design committee meeting is scheduled for June 22nd. Uh, pool projects, so this actually includes all that pool projects that's still on hold. The security upgrade, sorry, still includes two separate projects. One of them is the secure entries that we're working on. And the other one is the visual notification updates that will happen at several of your buildings. There was a kickoff meeting on June 10th with ISG, who's going to be the designers for this. And they're going to be spending several weeks uh combing through your buildings to put the designs together. I believe there's 24 buildings in total. And our hope is to be bidding these out in early part of 2021 to start a portion of them next summer and finish up in summer of 2022. Um, auditorium projects are on budget and by all accounts are on time. Where this puts us overall, we're at a total budget of 182.6 million. Approved budget is 180.9 million, putting us roughly 1.6 or 1.7 million over. Our current contingency that we're carrying is 8.5 million, so we're still sitting in a good spot. Um, we do need to be conscious of determining what we're wants versus needs and make responsible decisions through the design process so we can maintain this budget. Big picture, that is everything that I have for you. Is there any questions on any of this?
Thank you, Mr. McWaters, as usual. Very nice details. Um, fairly, fairly easy for somebody like me to follow, except it's the teeny tiny writing, but bust your chops too much for that. Um, board members, any questions? Um, gentlemen, can anybody give us, including Superintendent, can you give us any feedback on the um public meetings about the middle school design? I believe Superintendent thought that it sounded like a good turnout, but just looking for some high-level engagement.
Yeah, I, I, I think if uh, and Heather, maybe you can jump in or Jason, if you have no- I thought it was over 40 people were on at that time. Is that an accurate number, Heather?
Yeah, we have um, can you, my speaker was being had close to over 40. And we hosted a staff meeting prior to, I think we had roughly 26, 27 staff members um paying attention to that, that proposal. And then we did place them on our website too for anyone who missed that opportunity.
Great, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else, board members?
Um, if anybody uh watches that meeting, ask, uh, sorry, go back. The middle school meeting, if anybody does watch that later, was, wasn't able to attend the first time, is there a email that people can send questions or input?
I believe they took all that feedback already into consideration, Director Nathan, because they had their final meeting on um yesterday, actually.
Today, yep.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Board members, if there's nothing else, I suggest we let our building friends sign off and enjoy the rest of the evening. So thank you so much. Uh, we look forward to hearing from you next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Board members, 7.03, approval of the 2021, 2020, 2021 school district budget. This is an action item, so I have to read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve and appropriate the 2020, 2021 original expenditure budget in the following amounts. Food service fund, 9,821,848. Community service fund, 13,461,452. Building construction fund, 74,000, 70, excuse me, 74,207,843. Debt service fund, 20,668,837. FSA plan and HRA trust fund, 3,690,000. Workers' compensation fund, 1,208,022. Dental insurance trust fund, 2,768,178. Health insurance trust fund, 34,189,231. Printing service fund, 591,572. OPEB irrevocable trust fund, 1,567,979, for a total amount of 400, 403,573,222, 220 dollars. I need a motion?
Still moved, Marvin.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Director Marvin?
Yeah, question, the 150,000 that the board asked for to be devoted to equity. I'm wondering where in the budget that's reflected, in the revised budget, that's reflected?
Um, I'll, I'll let John specifically tell you, but I, it turns out it's almost $200,000 when you factor in benefits and all of that. So I'll just let you know that we have, in the process, gotten feedback from the employees of color group, our equity specialists, and working to get suggestions from our bilinguals. And so we also talked today at cabinet on reaching out to those students that I put up on the screen earlier in the meeting and get their input as well. So once we collect all that information, we, at a later date, will come back and inform the board on how we are using that $200,000. And John, if you want to specifically address how, where it shows up in the budget.
Sure. Good evening, everyone.
Evening, John.
I am going to hopefully share my screen, and right now you should be seeing the frequently asked questions page. This is a new page in the budget. I'm going to pop back, though, quick, to answer the specific question here before I talk about this one. So Director Marvin asked, where does it show up? It's in this line item now called Other Student Support, so this line item is higher than what you saw previously. And then I'm going to jump ahead to the frequently asked question that we did add into the budget page here, or the budget book. We thought it would be important to highlight all of the spending that we're doing on equity, and equity, as we talked it over, is for all students to make sure they have access and that they're included. And so equity, in our definition, means more than racial equity, and so it can be everything from special education to English learner, adult basic ads, so on and so forth. So just put all these different components that are included within the budget, along with this new line item called New Investment and Equity Work for the 196,312. If you total it all up, you can see that we've come up with about $69 million of our general fund budget is directly related to making equitable education in our system.
Okay. That's excellent. Thank you so much, John, for doing that. Questions, board members? Yes, Director Nathan?
John, thanks for pointing out the line item where the changes were. I, I like going into your little, the pages where you have your really little numbers, because I like wearing reading glasses, or some reason. But I did notice that the, the superintendent and cabinet line looks like where the money is being, I don't know what the right word is, stored? Since it sounds like the superintendent says that you're still working on getting feedback as to what the actual allocation of that money is going to be, but you increased the superintendent and cabinet line, so is, is that accurate to say that that's where the money is, and then the rest of it is in benefit?
Yes, so that's how we've coded it to start with. We put it in as a cabinet position, so there's an extra salary there, and then it's within different benefit codes for health insurance, so on and so forth. The program is actually Other Student Support, so, but yes, the object of expenditure was a cabinet salary for now. And if that's not where we land, of course, we'll be bringing a budget revision to you around November 15th, I think, and so we'll ask you to move it from that line to a different line at that time officially.
Okay.
Director Barlow?
Yes, thank you. Well, having heard, and Mr. Carlson, thank you for your expanded view and explanation of how one may view equity, yet I think that the most current usage of the term equity isn't necessarily in regards to all students. And I will just pause there and say to my fellow board members, this is why, in terms of our policy committee, that we need to actually come up with the policy governing equity, so that I'm not left thinking that equity means one thing, and you and others thinking that it means something completely different. But having said that, I've also had opportunity to rethink the request for additional funding to include cabinet level designation, and I guess I want to seek clarification at this point from the superintendent. And the question then is, isn't equity ultimately a responsibility that falls to Superintendent Munoz to ensure that adequate staffing and budget supports are in place, so that those students who may have historically been underserved can be brought up to the level of equity access? So I guess the question is still with, don't we already have a person in that position without adding a new cabinet position? And isn't that person Superintendent Munoz? Correct me if I'm wrong or in error in thinking that that is your responsibility, and how you choose to ferret that out also is your responsibility and call as well?
Yeah, I, yes, thanks, Don. Yes, I, ultimately, it is the responsibility of the superintendent to do that. You know, we're, we're excited to have that additional funding to target specifically more equity work beyond what we're currently doing. And I think it was important that we reach out to the different groups and really reach out to the student group that we just recognized earlier tonight, and really making sure that we are making good use of that additional funding to address our equity work. But you're right, ultimately, it is the responsibility of, of the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Director Marvin?
I appreciate those comments, and I absolutely appreciate the fact that we have many students here who are, who deserve the respect and to be treated equitably, and it's not just our students of color. Because this is a budget matter, however, I would just add my voice, mine only, that I really hope and strongly advocate for our administration to listen to the employees of color who have responded to a request about how this funding could be used most effectively, to listen and to respect that perspective. Because I think this is the time for us to make the kind of changes that we need to make, and even if it's a change that we're reluctant to make, that we are, this is the time for change. So my perspective, I am hopeful, clearly I cannot direct, but I'm hopeful that we do provide an additional cabinet position for an equity director who would advocate for all our kids, our kids of color, as well as our GLBTQ plus kids and every child. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Any other comments on, before we vote to approve the budget? Director Schlusner, and then Director Nathan, I believe?
I just have one request for the next time we see a budget, is one of the things that we need to do is be very conscious of when we're spending money external to the district. So I think it would be good if we could try to quantify our return on investments on the resource officers that we are currently housing with the police department. I, I think it'd be good to see if the money we're spending there is truly justifiable, considering the requests that we've had, to perhaps remove them.
Thank you, Director Schlusner. Director Nathan?
Yes, and I think as we go forward with the discussion of the expenditures of the equity money, and again, I'm speaking only for myself, but I, I appreciate Director Marvin's comments about listening to that feedback. And I think one of the things that we've seen in the messages that we've gotten from our community is that we haven't been transparent enough with them about the decision process and the, the way we get to our conclusions about why we do the equity work that we do. I really appreciate your response to the email that I sent requesting the equity expenditures, because I think that gets us one step further. And Director Barlow, you'll be pleased to know that we, we do have a very robust draft of an equity policy moving down the track, and I hope it'll be at the policy committee by July. But what that equity policy process is teaching me is that we do need to enumerate where we're spending our money on equity, and what our programs are clearly, because we're going to be starting to evaluate those programs through that equity lens much more explicitly. So if this is one of the first decisions we're making with this new equity money, personally, I'd like to see, you know, what that feedback was telling us, and how that feedback led into the decision that the superintendent makes with the, the spending of the new money.
Thank you, Director Nathan. Anything else, board members? Any other questions, comments, before approving the budget?
I would just throw out there one more thing on the equity frequently asked questions, the $69 million question there. It is very possible, we made this in an afternoon, so, you know, just in case there's an oversight and we've missed some position or some expenditure, you know, that number could grow. I don't, I don't see it as being less than that, but it could be a little bit more than that if we've missed something. So just take that for, you know, having to redo this pretty quick.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that, and we do appreciate you being time-sensitive to meetings to get information out, and we will take your words. Thank you. Ms. Workman?
Yes, I listened to the portion of last, the last board meeting that dealt with this particular subject, and there were some mixed messages there that I would, would like to, to have clarified. At one point, several times, the board was told that this is strictly a superintendent decision and policy 401.01, I think the number is, was quoted to us. But then also on several different occasions, the superintendent asked the board to tell him what we wanted him to do, and he would do it. So I'm, I'm still in a, in a little bit state of limbo. This is probably not the best time to just enter that discussion, but I'd just like to put it out there. The second thing is that it was indicated that time is of the essence in terms of hiring new personnel, perhaps, and I was wondering if the superintendent has any kind of a timeline for meeting, getting input from these other groups, so that if he wants to hire somebody that, you know, I don't know if he can get it done yet this fall or not, so I'd be kind of interested in knowing where we are in that. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a specific timeline, but I do know we're moving as quickly as possible. I shared with you already, we have met with the current Employees of Color Resource Group. However, that group is not true, a full representation of all the different employee groups of color in our system, so we know we have to reach out to those individuals. We've already had conversations and gotten feedback from the equity specialist. Like I said, we're waiting on, on the bilinguals, and like I said, we want to reach out to those students, and, you know, we, I've seen a draft of the petition that they have. As I said earlier, we have not formally received that yet, but we would like to reach out to them and get a little more specific information based on some of the things that are in that letter. And then we also talked about today that we would probably have some other individuals with us, as, with the cabinet, looking at all of that feedback to help us make that decision for moving forward. As far as timeline, I can tell you, if we would land on a cabinet position, time is, is important. My thinking and recommendation, recommendation would be that we hire a national search firm to help us do recruiting for that cabinet level position. So, and this is, we're getting within the next month or so, it's going to be a little more difficult to potentially get an outside candidate to be able to get out of their contract at their current district to come to our district. So we are trying to move as fast as we, quickly as we can, but we also want to make sure that we do a good job of getting the input of those we need to get input from, and, and make sure that we make a good decision. So I don't have a specific date or timeline, but we do know that quickly is possible because we have to, you know, get postings out and, and recruiting people for those positions.
Right, and I want to say, I really appreciate the effort that's being made to have a, a number of different groups provide input, which is something that I know we're in complete agreement on that, so thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, I'm, and I'm going to clarify, you're clarifying, superintendent, that there, we have not decided that we, that it will be a cabinet level position, but it is something that is being discussed with the groups. So just don't want to make, want to make sure those here on our call and those listening that that has not been decided as of yet.
That is correct. I can tell you, that's one of many recommendations that we have from the groups that we've collected the information from already, yep.
Great, thank you. Yep, just clarifying. Anything else, board members? Anything else, board members?
Director Seelinger, can you remind us where we're at on this resolution? Do we need, is the next step to take a vote, or is there something else needed?
Yep. As long as you don't ask me to read it again. Yes, our next, our next action is to vote on the budget, and we have to do that, as we know, John, by the end of June, correct?
That is correct. This is our last meeting, so unless you want to call a special meeting, we should get this passed tonight in some form or fashion.
All right. So that, with that information, anything else, board members? I will ask Ms. Edgar to do the roll call vote. I'm hoping that she is with us. She was, I think, running to go plug in her computer someplace else. She's left my sightline. Ms. Edgar, when you hear my voice, you may start doing the roll call vote to approve the budget. I can take the roll call vote. Right? Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger votes aye. Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. We appreciate your work. 7.04, Approval of Revisions to the Policies and Procedures Manual. This looks to be a briefing item. I'm going to turn it over to the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Jean Marvin here. We have 26 policies to brief this evening. We'll try to do it briefly. Board members have all received the policies in their original form, their revised form. Some are, include changes sent from the Minnesota School Board Association. Some are policies that this district reviews as part of our regular process whereby we review every policy at least once every three years. We cannot approve any of these until our next meeting, so if there are questions or comments that arise, we can process those in the meantime. Three of us on the Policy Committee will be briefing these, and I suggest that we hold questions until each debriefer, I think that's a word, has concluded her section. I say her, all females. Also, board members, you've received all the policies in their original form and their revised form, and you've also received a summary of the gist of each policy and the changes that are attached at the bottom of the section of Board Docs for the policy section, so that might help you. I'll do the first few. Policy 205, Open and Closed Meetings. This one describes school board meetings, which is four or more members. They need to discuss, decide, or receive information. They must be open to the public unless they are authorized by law to be closed. There are non-substantive changes here to new legal references. 402, The Disability and Non-Discrimination Policy. This one is the district's employment process that will not discriminate against a qualified individual because of disability, and reasonable accommodations will be provided. Again, a non-substantive changes, one new legal reference. 414, Mandated Reporting of Child Neglect or Physical or Sexual Abuse. Minnesota statute requires, and I think ethics require, school personnel would report suspected child neglect or physical or sexual abuse that is concurrently, is currently occurring or that has occurred in the previous three years. MSBA has included a clear definition of the term sexual abuse. 419, Tobacco-Free Environment Possession and Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-Related Devices and Electronic Delivery Devices, which says that all individuals on school district premises or at off-campus school district-sponsored events are prohibited from smoking or using any tobacco or electronic delivery device. And MSDA has added the term and description of electronic delivery device, as well as a definition of tobacco. 421, Gifts to Employees and School Board Members. This states that to avoid the appearance of conflict of interest, school district employees may not accept gifts with a resale value of more than $5 from students and from certain other groups. MSBA has added the definition of financial interest. 423, Employee-Student Relationships states that school district personnel will be mindful of their inherent positions of authority and influence over students and will treat them with respect. There is one legal reference change. 506, Student Discipline. This one states that the school board is committed to providing a safe and supportive learning environment for students and personnel, including a commitment to employing PBIS. That's our behavior system. And the only change there is a reference to Policy 419, which now has a new title. School Activities states that school activities provide additional meaningful opportunities that complement instructional programs and are of secondary importance. And MSBA has included language that the school board ensures funds raised for extracurricular activities will be spent only on extracurricular activities. The term "secret organizations" has been removed. And finally, Policy 515, The Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. This one's really important. It states that, it's 23 pages long, and states that Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, this is a mandated law, it's called FERPA, states that it protects the privacy of parents, guardians, and students. So that, and we've had a number of issues where parents whose kids get into an altercation with another kid, they want to find out what happened to the other kid, and FERPA prevents the district from providing that information. For this one, only one cross-reference has been deleted. If there are no questions on those, we will go on to the next presenter. Any questions?
Board members, just chime in on any of those policies that Director Marvin briefed us on. It's very thorough. Thank you. Much appreciation.
And then Ms. Workman or Ms. Nathan, who's up next?
I am.
Good.
So we'll continue with Policy 532, which is the use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. These were recommended changes from our MSBA policy resource. The purpose of this policy is to define how a school crisis team or peace officer may be involved in moving a student, removing a student with an individualized education plan from school grounds in order to protect the child or others from physical injury. And the changes involve the date by which the district must report any incidences where this happens each quarter year. Policy 611, Homeschooling. This policy identifies how school districts must provide textbooks and other instructional materials to students who are homeschooled. And this change, if a teacher guide or there's other instructional materials packaged with a textbook, either in paper or electronic form, those must also be provided by the district to the homeschooled students. Item 703, Annual Audit. This policy talks about how the school board appoints an independent CPA to audit and examine school district books and records, to provide a record of errors or discrepancies, and to report on the financial position of the school district and provide financial guidance. This is another MSBA change by adding the word "audit" to the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide, which is issued by the State Auditor's Office. Policy 720 has to do with food and beverage vending machines. This governs vending machines installed in school district facilities, including how contracts will be awarded depending on the estimate of the expected proceeds. And the proceeds from the vending machines are controlled and accounted for by the school board. This change eliminated a reference to the administrative procedures available in the Administrative Procedures Manual. Next policy is 721, Uniform Grant Guidance Policy Regarding Federal Revenue Sources. This is a 12-page policy that is a very thorough description of how districts must comply with the requirements of the federal uniform grant guidance in order to administer federal grants appropriately, and there were no changes to this policy. Policy 802 is Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Materials. MSBA recommended changes to this policy. In general, this provides guidelines for the superintendent to assist in the timely disposition of obsolete equipment and materials, which includes guidelines for getting sealed bids, quotations, or open market offers depending on the value of the item. And the changes involve updating the way electronic devices, including tablets, can bypass the requirement for competitive bidding if they are being provided to another school district, charitable organization, or district students and families. And finally, we have a new procedure, 750, and this is for our information only, called the Pro-Debt Management Procedure. And it talks about how, fascinating subject, interest in tax-exempt bonds are made excluded from gross income per the IRS code. And I don't remember how many pages this is, but it's very long, and it's an entirely new procedure. There are new procedures in this document.
Questions for any of those policies? Any questions on those policies, board members? Okay, Dr. Workman?
Okay, so I get to finish up with the 500 policies, the student policies, which were reviewed as part of our regular review cycle. So, Policy 518, DNR and DNI Orders. School districts are not medical organizations and will not accept or honor, do not resuscitate or do not intubate requests. If emergency care is needed, 9/11 will be called, and reasonable care will be provided, but school personnel will not provide DRI, I'm sorry, DNR or DNI requests to emergency responders. There's no change in this policy. Policy 519, Interviews of Students by Outside Agencies. Generally, students may not be interviewed during the school day by anyone other than their parents or school district employees. Requests by law enforcement to interview students will go through the principal's office, and the principal is responsible for attempting to contact the student's parents or guardians unless the interview involves mistreatment by an alleged perpetrator with whom the student lives. There was no change on this policy. Policy 520, Student Surveys. This policy provides the parameters of the kind of information that may and may not be sought in student surveys. Surveys will not ask for questions about students or their family's personal life, morals, beliefs, et cetera. It protects student anonymity. Parents and guardians have the right to inspect the surveys and have their child opt out. This policy includes a definition of the term "parent" and makes clear that a guardian may have that role. There is no change on this policy. Policy 520.01, Student Participation in Research. The school board approves of research being conducted in schools. Internal requests to conduct research must be approved by the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. External requests must be approved by the Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and the school board. The change in this policy was to remove Director of Elementary and Secondary Education and replace it with the Director of Curriculum and Instruction who approves the request. Policy 521, Student Disability and Non-Discrimination. This policy protects all students with disabilities from discrimination as the district identifies and evaluates who needs services and accommodations in order to receive a free, appropriate public education. There was no change in this policy. 523 are Policies Incorporated by Reference. So the list of policies from MSBA June revisions updated the title of 419, which was mentioned earlier in this presentation. 526 is a hazing prohibition, where no one shall plan, permit, or condone hazing on or off-school property during or after school hours. False accusations and retaliation or reprisal are prohibited. Reporting procedures, consequences, and a clear definition of hazing are provided. There is an updated description of how the policy information will be disseminated. Policy 527, Student Use and Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections, and Searches. This is, these are guidelines for the use and parking of motor vehicles by students in school district locations, including the circumstances under which a vehicle may be searched or inspected. Language changed from listing the names of specific district buildings to which students have permission to drive during the school day to the term "other buildings used by the district for curricular program." This helps us in that every time we have a new building come online, we don't have to go back and change the language in the policy. 528, Student Parental Family and Marital Status and Non-Discrimination. This policy provides equal educational opportunities for all students and prohibits discrimination on the grounds of sex, parental family, or marital status. Section 2D was deleted from this policy. And then finally, 529, Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. Certain staff should know if a student has a history of violent behavior, and a management plan should be put in place. Staff should report their knowledge of the student's violent behavior to the principal. No change in this policy. Are there any questions?
Director Amundson?
And the second to the last one, 528, was there a reasoning provided for the deletion of Section 2D?
There was. I have to find it. Jean or Kathy, do you have that at your fingertips?
Yes, and that section referenced a separate program for students who were pregnant and who are educated off-campus. It's a program that no longer exists. If a young woman becomes pregnant, we don't tell her she has to get educated somewhere else anymore. So, it was that case.
It seems to me it was removing that protection, which seemed unusual, but the reason isn't because we don't want that classification of students protected, it's because it's no longer applicable in our district.
That's exactly right.
And we also have, I mean, that's also covered in another policy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Thanks, Jean.
Any other questions for the Policy Committee? They have worked hard, I can tell. There's a long list, they got knocked out here, so that's awesome. Anything else? Okay. Well, we will, oh, Director Amundson?
I just wanted to say how useful it was to have the document with the summary, and I wanted to thank whoever it was, or all three of you who put the work into that summary document for us.
Well, she won't take credit, but it's our vice chair, Director Marvin.
Thank you, Jean. Great. Okay, thanks, everyone. We'll see these again next month, or next meeting in consent, I believe. The next item on the agenda is a closed session. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, .03 subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations. May I have a second?
Second. Nathan?
Been moved and seconded. I will take the roll call vote. Director Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow? Uh, Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger is aye. Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Okay. We will go in, we will recess at eight sixteen PM. We are reconvening this meeting at eight twenty-eight PM. I move to amend the agenda to add the following items. Approval of the 2020, 2022 Rochester Administrators Associate RAA Work Guide Agreement and approval of 2020, 2020, 2022 Cabinet Work Agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Nathan.
That was Workman.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Uh, Seelinger, aye. Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Yeah, just a sec. Oh. All right. The next item is approval of 2020, 2022 Rochester Administrator Association RAA Work Guide Agreement. This is an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2020, 2022 Rochester Administrators Association Work Guide Agreement. Motion?
Move approval. Amundson?
Second, Nathan.
Been moved and seconded. I will now, uh, do the roll call. Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Uh, Seelinger, aye. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is approval of 2020, 2022 Cabinet Work Agreement. This is an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2020, 2022 Cabinet Work Guide Agreement. Motion?
Motion to approve. Schlusner?
Second. Amundson?
I'll take the roll call. Amundson?
Aye.
Barlow?
Aye.
Marvin?
Sorry. Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Schlusner?
Aye.
Seelinger, aye. Workman?
Aye.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you to, uh, Human Resources and, uh, Business Services for, um, getting us the contract information. Okay. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A, I move to go into closed session to conduct the annual performance evaluation of Superintendent Michael Munoz. May I have a second?
Second. Workman?
Uh, Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Aye. After Barlow, aye. Yeah.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Uh, Seelinger, aye. Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we will go into recess at eight thirty-two PM. Um, everyone may take a short break and then, uh, we'll We are reconvening this meeting at eleven forty-five PM. Eight point oh one, future discussions. Are there any other future discussions board members want to share? Hearing none, adjourning this meeting at eleven forty-six PM.